Thank you Frank. Good evening, welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Monday, December 8th. I'll read our agenda. At 7:00 PM we'll open our meeting. We will have two public hearings. The first one is for Skip Jacks for an alleged alcohol violation, followed by our second public hearing, Waxy O'Conners for an alleged alcohol violation. John, can you lead us in the lodge please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, tonight we have Attorney Brandon Ross here for the town. Would you like to come to the table?
Thank you.
And Sergeant Noonan. Thanks. Okay. So, our first hearing for Skip Jacks, Jenny would you read the public notice?
Legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, December 8th, 2014 at 7:00 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's annotated, Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Skip Jacks 226 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are invited to attend.
Thank you. So, representatives for Skip Jacks, please.
Yes. I'm John Mitchell Moore, attorney in Foxborough, representing Skip Jacks.
Do you want to have a seat, John?
I'll sit back, John.
Okay. Brandon, would you like to start us off?
Sure. So, basically, all I'll do is I'll run through a series of questions of Sergeant Noonan, and I don't know if Skip Jacks is intending to present any testimony today, tonight.
Not any testimony, but we would be, I've been making a presentation.
Okay. Do you have any witnesses that need to be sworn in?
No.
Okay. So, basically, just run through the incident, the incident report through Sergeant Noonan, and also provide the board an opportunity for any questions at any point through that.
Thank you.
Okay. So, can you state your name?
Sergeant Richard Noonan.
Okay. And I wanted to direct your attention to the narrative report that's dated, or that was entered, 9/29/14. Do you recognize this document?
I do.
And what is that document?
It's an incident report document in the sale of an alcohol to a minor that took place at Skip Jacks.
Okay. And can you describe the nature of the operation that led to this incident report?
Under the direction of Chief O'Leary, on September 25th, 2014, I conducted an alcohol compliance check at all the licensed establishments within the town of Foxborough. Prior to conducting this compliance check, I reviewed the department's rules and regulations on conducting compliance checks with identification with the underage operative. The underage operative was identified as being 19 years old based on his true, vowed, and authentic Massachusetts driver's license.
Okay. And is the operative in the room tonight?
He is.
And can you identify him? Okay. And in terms of the guidelines for conducting compliance checks, were those followed?
They were.
Okay. And how did the operation commence?
After reviewing the rules and regulations, myself, another plainclothes undercover police officer, and the underage operative went to Skip Jacks restaurant at approximately 7:14 PM.
Okay. And what happened with the operative in Skip Jacks?
During this time, the underage operative entered Skip Jacks restaurant, made his way to the bar, sat down, had conversation with a female bartender, at which time he stated that he asked for a Bud Light, to which the female bartender responded by asking him if he wanted a draft or a bottle. The underage operative requested a draft, at which time the female bartender poured him a draft of Bud Light beer and then put it in front of him. He then took possession of it and subsequently asked for a tab and then eventually made payment and received change.
Okay. Was there a receipt requested or recovered?
There was.
Okay. And what happened after the undercover operative had received the receipt?
He made payment, he left the establishment, and made contact with myself and the undercover officer.
Okay. And did you have any contact with the establishment or the bartender afterwards?
I did.
And what was the result of that?
By the time I went back that night, the establishment was closed. I made contact with the manager, Peter Dowd, the next morning, and advised him as to what happened.
Okay. And did he have any response to that?
He was very apologetic, upset that it happened, and immediately terminated the employee.
Okay. No further questions.
Thank you. John?
Sergeant Noonan, did you observe this activity with the underage?
This instance, I actually did. I was looking through the windows, and I was able to see the transaction.
And was the bar busy at the time?
It was not.
So, is it fair to say that the...
John, can you step up to the microphone, please?
Sure. Is it fair to say that the bartender was either hurried or rushed?
That's correct.
And have you had subsequent conversations with Mr. Dowd about this incident?
I have.
Okay. And during those conversations, were you able to review his pre-mail checklist?
Not since this violation, I have in the past reviewed his pre-mail presentations. I've talked to Mr. Dowd on numerous occasions, just through my course of walking through Patriot Place, and he does advise me as to what he's doing on a daily basis, and he does present his pre-mail presentations about serving underage, serving at minors and making sure that his staff is doing the right thing.
And to best of your knowledge, has there been any other violations on the alcohol serving laws at Skip Jacks other than the one approximately one year ago?
No.
No other questions?
All right. Does the board have any questions?
I'm just not familiar with the term "pre-mail presentations." What is that?
At Skip Jacks and many restaurants and bars, the managers or the shift leaders will talk to their staff and review specials for the night and everything else that they expect for the night. And in Mr. Dowd's case, I know, I've seen his presentation that he presents, and he does address on a constant basis to make sure that they're doing their job and correctly asking for identification and reading the identification.
Okay. Thank you.
And that takes place before every shift?
To the best of my knowledge.
With every employee?
To the best of my, to the best of my knowledge, Mr. Dowd.
May I address these to you, John?
Yes, that is okay.
Okay. Just a question. This employee was employed by Skip Jacks for how long?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years. So, the employee was fully trained. Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Sergeant Noonan, I know you have had, you go into establishments along, I've seen you with Officer Grace.
Correct.
In plainclothes going in, and what you're doing is, you're checking out to see if there are, you know, underage drinkers in the establishments. Have you ever had an occasion in Skip Jacks to go to a, this wouldn't be a sting, this would be just, you happen to see someone who looks underage, and you ask them, have you had an occasion to find people underage in Skip Jacks that you have asked for ID and it's been a false ID or a underage ID?
I have not.
No? Okay. Thank you. David?
John, who administered this pre-mail presentation? Is it the same person and shift? Is it...
It would be the shift manager.
Shift manager.
John, was there follow-up training after this incident with staff?
Yes. Yes, there was.
What type of training was it?
Excuse me?
What type of training was that provided?
It was training, what was the name? The dram shop consultant group came in the following weekend and gave a training, additional training to all of the staff that was...
One other quick question. Looking back at the violation within the last three years, when Skip Jacks was in front of us last time, we had suggested an automatic card reader. Have they, in a decline that, is there one on the premises, and do they use it?
No. They don't because, in this instance, you can read in the report, it wouldn't have made any difference anyway because the woman never asked for a license. Their process for, do you want me to give my, I've got kind of a overall presentation, I can cover some of this stuff and maybe...
Yeah, I don't think I needed a presentation of why they don't have it, I just wanted to know if they had one or not.
Yeah, that was, that's the answer.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
John, if you want to give your presentation?
Yeah, it's all right with you.
Is it dealing with this incident, or is it dealing with something larger than that?
No, with this incident.
Okay.
Yeah.
I see no problem.
First, just for those of you who don't know, Skip Jacks is a high-end restaurant that serves alcohol. It's not a bar that serves food. The configuration of the restaurant is set up to conform to that. The license has 214 seats, there's only 18 seats at the bar, and there's also full meal service at the bar. There are very few alcohol-only customers. They cater to business customers, families, and customers who want a fine dining experience. Approximately 23% to 24% of their gross revenue is derived from alcohol, both at the bar and the tables. They don't attract or cater to the younger drink and snack crowd. They're basically a food service restaurant. Although the license permits them to be open until 1:00, they have last call Monday through Thursday at 10:30, last call on Friday and Saturday at 11:30, and Sunday at 9:00 PM. They really try to do all of the right things, I think Sergeant Noonan has expressed that. Again, the Friday morning, after the incident, the server was immediately fired. The following weekend, they had the complete training dram shop group. All of the servers, including this server, had been retrained the prior year under the tips program after the incident of a year ago. The, they all have signed an alcohol service contract. Oops. Thank you.
Counsel, is this new, or is this something that they've had before?
That's something they've always had.
Okay. Unfortunately, we weren't able to dig out of the storage the one that this woman signed, but she did sign it. You can see clearly in the paragraph referring to serving of minors, that not only is that grounds for immediate dismissal, but it's their corporate policy to, if there's any question of people, if they think they're even under the age of 30, they're required to ask for IDs. The, on the game days or days when there is a large event at the stadium, they do have an individual at the door checking everyone's ID, and the people who are presenting proper ID get a stamp and a send-in, but the people serving inside are still authorized to ask for IDs if anyone has a question. The pre-mail and uniform check, what's called, is done every day, twice a day, at 11:00 and 5:00, which is roughly the beginning of the two shifts. I have a copy of the one of September 25th.
Thank you.
It's on the computer. Should have a trip on this.
Thank you.
Do you have a, should I copy some of those?
Sure.
And again, you can see that that's basically what the shift managers go over. The, under the featured wine and drink specials, or drink specials, again, the two is a trade, two is ID, 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 and the three and the four talk about why they have to even have the people take their IDs out of their wallets. And that number 13, as you can see, is police sting, be on high alert. The last thing that they did was, when they received the notification from the chief of police about this proposed operation, a copy of that letter was put on the manager's door in plain view for everyone to see. The server, again, had been employed for about two and a half years. She had been through the tips training twice. Once, because within her first year of employment, which is another local rule, and then she was, again, recertified after the incident a year ago. She was certainly aware that the person who made the serving error a year ago was also immediately fired. One of the cruel ironies of this was that she was fired on Friday morning, and on Saturday she was rehired at a bar in Franklin, essentially doing the same thing. We had no, absolutely no idea what, if anything, she was thinking. Although the night was slow, she certainly was not hustling for tips. This was a $2 draft beer, not a $10 martini where she was going to get any extra money. Does not seem to be an issue of inadequate training for identifying a sophisticated false ID or an incident where electronic advice would have, device would have helped. She had to ask for a license, and she didn't do that. You know, I'm just, what just came up was, same time as the three Secret Service agents at the White House let an armed intruder walk by without even moving. One of them was in the van on his personal cellphone. So, how much training do those people have? So, it's just, it's baffling, not only to the owners, but it's also baffling to me how anyone could not do this. I think I said a couple of years ago when I was in a similar hearing, that we had a saying in the Navy, that you can make something foolproof, but you couldn't make it sailor-proof. And I think that that's the, probably the incident here. I think as much training as this woman had, it doesn't really take an awful lot of brains or training to ask someone, if you're serving liquor, to ask someone for an ID. The next point I wanted to make is that there are other people who really get hurt by any kind of suspension. Skip Jacks employs approximately 85 people. They have two six-hour shifts a day. Each shift has about 20 people in the front, including the bar staff, the waiters and waitresses and the busboys. They have 10 to 12 people in the back, including the cooks, the dishwashers, and those kinds of people. And the restaurant attempts to give all employees a minimum of five, six-hour shifts a week, so roughly 30 hours. Typically, a bar or a waiter can earn between $100 and $125 in tips per shift on a weekday, and between $200 and $300 a shift on a weekend. Therefore, if you have a three-day suspension such as you have imposed on the prior violations, that could affect roughly $400 to $500 in the tips that a person could receive. And if you think that a, partially a quarter of that is alcohol-related, the people could lose between $100 and $150, assuming there was no loss of food business or any kind of staff reductions during any kind of suspension. And that's probably pretty unlikely that that wouldn't happen. So, it's pretty reasonable to think on a three-day suspension that these innocent people are going to lose a couple hundred dollars out of their pockets. And if you're someone who's working your way through college, or grad school, or someone working their second job to make ends meet, which is what these people are, that are in this field, that's a pretty tough hit. That could be a car payment, it could be a student loan payment, or it could be a portion of rent or a mortgage payment. As I said earlier, this has been a very, very frustrating experience for my clients. Not to minimize the seriousness of this offense, but in reality, Skip Jacks is not a place where, that attracts or quite frankly, is of any interest to the underage drinking crowd. However, they still, as we see by the pre-mail checklist, they still consciously and consistently remind their employees of their duties and responsibilities. This appears to be the act of one negligent, lazy, and careless employee. It's clearly not something that is encouraged or is even ingrained in the culture of the restaurant. Again, this is not a side-street gin mill in a college town that caters to, and is dependent on young people coming in and doing their drinking. And again, finally, it does, the suspension does affect an awful lot of innocent bystanders, including the employees. As an aside, my clients really fully support the idea of prosecuting the service, and there are a number of reasons for that. One is, again, I think just the facts on this particular situation, it's really grossly unfair that the server didn't even lose a day's pay, and some other people are going to be, could be seriously hurt financially. Secondly, I'm sure that these operations are going to continue, and they ought to continue. And hopefully, if the people who are in the business know that there's a potential to being charged, maybe in someone's head, the light's going to come on next year or the year after, that maybe that this isn't a joke, that this is serious. And then I think the final point is, and maybe the most important point, is if this person, or any person, is punished in some way for doing this, maybe in the future, if they stay in the field, and someone comes in who is underage and asks for a drink, and maybe if it isn't even a sting, maybe if it's just some underage kid comes in and wants a drink, they're going to think about that, and maybe that's going to save someone from doing that, save someone from doing something stupid, save a life. And that's really what the purpose of this whole program is, is to make sure that underage kids aren't drinking and out on the streets potentially causing harm to others. And one final point is that, again, this is a, you know, kind of a new world from when I first started practicing law, when something like this, you could get, no one would ever see this. But now, most employees want a query for even the basic jobs, and a query would reveal, even if this wasn't a guilty finding, if it was called a continuation without a finding, their criminal offense record inquiry would reveal something. And it may not disqualify someone from a job, but it certainly is going to, you know, have someone, something that someone is going to ask a question about. So, I think that this is, it's serious enough, and I think it's a good idea to be prosecuting. I know that the police really don't like it, it's expensive, annoying, but I think it's worth, it's worth the effort, and my clients do agree with that also.
John?
Sergeant Noonan, was there anyone else in the bar area? You had a line of sight, you could see into the bar area, you could see what was going on. Was there any other employee of the restaurant in the same vicinity?
I just looked at the, excuse me, I just looked at the bar area and was watching the transaction. I don't remember seeing anyone in the general area.
John, the reason I ask is that, and John, you had said that this is a restaurant that, you know, doesn't cater to a younger crowd, and the point I'm going to try to make is that when a young gentleman like that walks into the restaurant, he stands out like a sore thumb. Guys like that aren't there all the time, so I'm wondering if there was this bartender, you know, I agree, it was lazy, but secondarily, if there was anyone else in the bar area that could have said, hey, hold on, that guy's clearly underage. Was there anyone else in the bar area?
Probably not. There were only two people at the bar. You know, they've done some reconstruction. There were only two people at the bar at the time, so the shift manager may have, could have been anywhere else in the restaurant, any of the waiters or waitresses. This transaction probably took, I would say, the most, two minutes.
Couple minutes, it was in and out.
So, I mean, it's something that easily could have, you know, but I mean, I would, you know, having known the, having dealt with the management, if that had been observed by the shift manager or anyone else, that certainly would have been questioned, because again, you know, they were aware this was happening, they were supposed to be on high alert, and they were, this woman obviously wasn't, but I think everyone, it's fair to say everyone else was, and so I think that...
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
How do you know that everybody was present at this pre-mail presentation?
How do you verify that everybody's there? Maybe somebody may have skipped out and, you know, had to go to men's room or ladies' room. How do you ensure that everybody is present and get these reminders?
Well, that's just part of, part of the process. I mean, just, when the people come in, I mean, I suppose that, you know, what you're saying is that, you know, that it's done every day, it's done twice a day, you know, possibly one person could miss one of them, but it's, if they're working five shifts a week, the chances are pretty good that they're going to, if they don't get five, they're going to get four. So, it just isn't one of those things that, and the shift managers, they're talking just to two people. The process is, is that those people coming in to work the next shift, you know, go into that room, they go over the, because they have to know, you know, what are the specials tonight, what are, you know, if someone asks you a question about the kinds of oysters here, you know, you have to be able to answer those. And there are some other specific things. I mean, this wasn't a particularly active evening, but on, generally on an evening, there are some very specific things that people working that shift have to know. So, if they don't get it directly, they're going to get it indirectly. You know, if they miss that meeting, someone's going to come up to them and say, here's what's going on. So, I think it's very likely that, you know, within a, within that period of time, they would have all been at these meetings. So, obviously, there's a disconnect, because if they're, you know, they're on a, you know, during a given week, they could have 30 hours, five shifts, six shifts during the week, and it's not busy, and someone like that walks in, cozy's up to the bar, and doesn't even get carded. So, where's the disconnect? No one knows. You know, is it overtraining? Is it overemphasis? It's, I think it's clearly not underemphasis. You know, it may be that you cry wolf so many times that, you know, when the wolf comes in, again, like the Secret Service guy, they were just standing there when a guy with a rifle walked right by him. And that's what they're trained to stop, and they didn't, they just, you know. And I think that that may be part of it, but who knows? I mean, she may have just been, just totally distracted. It would be interesting to do some kind of, you know, it's a, you know, without, because people aren't going to be charged, it'd be interesting to do some sort of debriefing and say, what were you thinking about when that happened? And I'm sure that there are eight other, you know, operators in town who are asking the same question. I don't think anyone really in this town is looking to serve underage people. I don't think that that's, you know, that's not the culture in the town, it's not the culture in the area, but it, you know, obviously, it does happen. And when I was growing up, there were a couple of places we could go pretty easily, you know, not in Foxborough, but in, you know, there was one in Mansfield, and there was one in Attleboro, and there was one in Cumberland that was, you know, all you had to do was have a beard. And those days are gone. But, I don't know, you know, if there were an answer, if anyone had an answer, my clients would love to know it, because they certainly don't want this to happen. Well, I think that's, that's part of the frustration with this board, is everybody's coming in with all these policies and procedures, yet it's still happening. It seems to be escalating. So, I don't know. I don't know if it's escalating, I mean, I just think it just seems that, you know, this year happened to be, there happened to be more, it goes up, and I think that in the history of this program, which has gone on for five or six years now?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's been up and down. In some years, it's two, in some years, it's five, and it isn't, it isn't a consistent growth. But I think this year, for some reason, you know, whether it was a full moon or whatever it was...
Yeah, but John, when you see nine violations, and like I said at the last meeting, it's a pattern of complacency.
Yeah.
And that's really what's annoying this board.
Absolutely. But, I mean, and I don't, you know, and, you know, they certainly, I think the group is certainly as worried about that as you are, and, you know, I don't think anyone has, has an answer for that. You know, one thing I've suggested, and I think that they're going to look into, is to possibly doing, having the restaurant group together to do a sort of a private type sting. In other words, you know, they could hire someone a younger age and do that, and just, you know, do it on a, rather than an annual basis, a constant basis, you know, once a month, once every two months, and just making, you know, making people trained to have the actual thing come out, as opposed to, you know, just the once a year, and just hope that, you know, in a minute, that one minute and a half... hope that, you know, in a minute, that one minute and a half, someone doesn't go brain dead on you.
Yeah, it is, you know, given the young man who's the operative, I mean, if he was an old, say he was an older-looking 19-year-old, but he's actually a younger-looking 19-year-old. If for an operation that just, that generally doesn't see kids in it, again, it's standing out like a sore thumb.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, why, why she didn't, you know, is, is absolutely, I mean...
But still, you know, your servers, they are the front line, they're representing the management of the company. The management trains them, the management hires them, the management puts them out there. And, you know, this is a highly regulated industry, and management says, I trust that they meet all the requirements, and I'm going to take the risk on my license by putting that person out there. So the management, I think, in this particular case, failed by keeping someone like that employed. I don't know, how do you find, how do you know?
Exactly. It's hard to prove the negative until it happens. And it's just, you know, I, I think that, you know, from what Sergeant Noonan has said, not only post-incident, but prior to the incident, I think he's satisfied that this organization does their best, you know. You know, leading the horse to water and making them able to drink is, you know, is difficult. And I just don't, you know, I think right now that they're scratching their heads, they just, they really, other than, you know, they did this, you know, they called it tips on steroids, this dram shop consultant, you know, what more can you do? How do you make, again, you know, you have a 26-year-old woman who, you know, is working 30 hours a week, I mean, how, you know, how committed is she? You know, how do you know that she committed? She can say all the right things, do all the right things, you know, come in and, you know, look, you know, be presentable, and, but, you know, when the, when the time comes, you know, if she's, you know, thinking about her boyfriend or something else, doesn't even, you know, not paying attention. I mean, unfortunately, as you all know in business, and you, you can have one, you know, you can have the best leadership in the world, and you have, but you have one, one employee that just doesn't pay attention for a minute and a half can cause everyone a lot of problems. And, and I think that that's what happened. I clearly don't think this is a pattern or a, you know, at least what like my clients said, that they're not, they're not paying attention. You know, getting people to pay attention is a difficult, is a difficult thing.
When you're given the license, I'm speaking to Skip Jacks now, your name is on the license, but also our name is on the license. The selectmen actually sign those licenses. And that's, that's our big concern, is this happened one, this sting, you knew about the sting because it's mentioned in number 13 of your, of your checklist. This happened once a year. Our concern is, what happens the other 364 days? This happened last year, under the once-a-year sting. It had, it happened again. So that's our concern, is, you know, we got, you got unlucky one night, but how many more nights during the year could you get unlucky if we, if another sting was done? That's our concern.
Well, I understand, I understand that. And that's real, but I think, you know, the realistic, the realistic thing is that you, you know, that for this and for many, there are certainly restaurants that cater to young people, that cater to that kind of crowd, that, you know, you get five kids who are 22 and one who was 19 who tries to slip in with them. And that's, that's, I think, where the, where the risks are here. But, you know, just the nature of their business is not that, you know, some 20-year-old isn't going to go in there and have 10 beers and walk out, jump in his car, and go hit someone. That's just not, that is not going to happen in that kind of restaurant. And there are other restaurants up there that that wouldn't happen.
But John, it did happen. It happens to a restaurant that caters to families and an older crowd. This kid walks in and it's not busy. He stands like, he stands out like a sore thumb. He's a young, he looks young.
I understand that. I mean, it isn't as if he, you know, sat, you know, I mean, the issue is not only being served, but the real issue is being served and served and served and served and doing something. That's what you want to prevent.
No, 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 no. The real, the real issue is following the law of Massachusetts and the regulations of Foxborough and asking for an ID when an obviously young-looking person attempts to buy a burger. You ask, the first thing you do is you ask for ID.
Absolutely. And why this, why this woman did it, do that, we have absolutely no idea. It's, I mean, we're, they're satisfied that, you know, she was trained, she certainly had warning, because she was an employee a year ago, when that, that person that did it a year ago got fired. So she knew this wasn't a joke, she knew she could, if she wasn't paying attention, she could get fired. And yet, for whatever reason, for that minute and a half, she went brain dead.
Well, I, I agree with Dave, there's kind of a disconnect if you're doing all this, you know, reminding, reminding, reminding.
Right.
And they don't even ask for an ID from a very young-looking person.
We don't have the answer. I mean, it just, you know, why, you know, it's, you know, is it all, and, you know, obviously, the buck stops at the top, but on the other hand, you know, what other kind of, I mean, they're certainly open to suggestions as to, you know, what they could do and how they could do it. But, you know, the, again, the conventional wisdom is to, again, do what they did, retrain everyone, take, put everyone back and go over it and go over it, make sure. And we just don't, just don't have an answer on why, you know, that one, that one moment for that, why she went brain dead. I suppose if you're really neurotic, you could say, maybe it was intentional. I, I don't, I don't think that that's the case. I think she just was careless, she was lazy, you know, she, all she wanted to do was to pour the beer and go back to do what she was doing, and whatever she was doing, and not bothered to have to, you know, ask this person for an ID, check it, do the math, you know, go all through that stuff. Why that, why that's an imposition on her, I don't know.
You don't even have to do the math. The ID is...
I understand.
A vertical ID for under 21. All you have to do is ask.
Other comments, questions?
No.
What was that? Okay. Thank you. All right. So Brandon, we do the finding of fact now at this time, right?
Correct. The board can make a finding of fact and deal with disposition in a subsequent phase, but for now, it's a matter of finding. I don't know if the applicant, I assume the applicant stipulates to the findings?
Right. We stipulate to a fact.
Okay. So at our past hearings, what we've done is heard all of the individual hearings and then actually came to discuss what we were going to do for disposition. So we'll just do the finding of fact at this time and then close this hearing, all right? Okay, I'll take a stab at this. So I move that we have finding of fact that there was service to an underage person as described in the report dated September 25th, 2014, addressed to Big Tuna LLC DBA Skip Jacks, and that the board agrees with the findings as presented.
I'll second that.
Those in favor? That's our only finding?
Correct.
Right?
Correct.
Okay, great. So I move that we close the hearing. I move that we close the hearing. Alleged alcohol violation for Skip Jacks, patron please.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, is it the pleasure of the board not to take any further action at this time? You're going to deliberate this at a, at a different date other than tonight? Is that correct?
I guess that's an option.
Yeah. When we hear the second one, then we can talk about that as an option.
Okay. Thank you.
The next hearing is, a public hearing is for Waxy O'Conners and alleged alcohol violation. Jenny, will you please read the hearing notice?
Attorney Morse, this is, this is supposed to be at 8:00, so you're going to ask permission to go early?
Uh, yes, I believe, yeah, okay.
Okay. I'm going to read the, I'm going to read the legal notice. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Monday, December 8th, 2014, at 8:00 PM in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, Foxborough, Mass, pursuant to its licensing authority in accordance with Massachusetts General Law as annotated, Chapter 138, Sections 23, 64, and 67, and all amendments thereto. The purpose of the hearing will be to review and discuss information concerning alleged violations of Chapter 138 that occurred at the Waxy O'Conners, 121 Main Street, Foxborough, Mass. All interested parties are invited to attend. Thank you.
Madam Chair, let the record show that the, that the participants in this hearing waived the restarting, the advertised time for the hearing.
Thank you.
Appointed vote, Madam Chair, and I brought this up before, when we advertise something for a specific time and there's no mention on our agenda published or on the website or tonight, and we have it 20 minutes early, my opinion, and it stays as it was last time, it's not in accordance with Mass open meeting law. If we, if we want to entertain having it early, we need to put on the, on the agenda or at a time that changed, because there are people that might want to come, a waitress might want to come, a bartender might want to come. If we have the hearing and they don't, and we don't give them that opportunity, we're putting the town at a position where we're not doing it according to the law. And I brought this up before, and I don't know why we keep doing this. So with all due respect, I'll recuse myself till 8:00, or I asked you, maybe we can reconvene on the past one while it's still open, but not to hear the issue on waxes before the, especially on this one, before it's at a published time where it was advertised in the paper.
Suggesting that we take a break for 20 minutes?
Well, the options are, we can do whatever we want for 20 minutes, but don't start this until 8:00.
So the first time we had the situation come up, it was based on the waiver of the participant, the party that permitted us to go forward. Brandon, is there, should we have a concern regarding open meeting law?
Um, yes. I mean, the one thing I would point out, Madam Chair, is the open meeting law itself is a, is not just for parties at the hearing, but also for the public to be able to attend and potentially participate if the board so wants to recognize them. Certainly, the applicant's waiver of that does provide an option to proceed earlier, but there is certainly the overarching concern with the public if the board's inclined to, to take a recess or a break for a few minutes.
Okay. Is this consensus to take a break till 8:00?
Yeah, I think it's the right...
Sure, take a break. Okay. All right. Frank, we're going to take a break now, we'll come back at 8:00.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome back to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, December 8th. We're going to begin now with the public hearing for Waxy O'Conners, alleged alcohol violation. Jenny's already read the public notice, so Brandon, if you'd like to start.
I don't know if Waxy O'Conners is looking to have witnesses present any testimony, if so, we should swear, man. Okay. So basically, just want to, a couple, a couple of questions for Sergeant Noonan. I wanted to direct your attention to the report that's, looks like it was dated October 1st, or entered October 1st. Are you familiar with that report?
I am.
And what does that report relate to in terms of Waxy O'Conners?
It reflects the underage compliance check that we conducted at Waxy O'Conners.
Okay. And was there an undercover operative that was present for that?
There was.
And is he in the room tonight?
He is.
Okay. And can you describe the nature of that operation at Waxy O'Conners?
On September 25th, 2014, under the direction of Chief O'Leary, I conducted a compliance check of the licensed establishments in the town of Foxborough. During this compliance check, an underage operative who was identified as being 19 years old through his true valid and authentic Massachusetts driver's license was used to enter the establishment.
Okay. And what happened during the, the operation?
At approximately 9:49, the underage operative entered Waxy's, Waxy O'Conners and made his way to the bar.
Okay. And did he order an alcoholic beverage?
He did.
Okay. And had, was he served an alcoholic beverage?
He was.
Was there a receipt for that order?
There was.
And how was the order paid for?
With cash.
Okay. And what happened after the undercover operative was served the alcoholic beverage?
After making payment and obtaining a receipt, the underage operative left the establishment with the plainclothes undercover officer who observed the transaction, made contact with me, and advised me as to what happened.
Okay. And was there any follow-up with the establishment after, after that occurred?
There was.
And how did that proceed?
Later that night, I entered the establishment and made contact with the manager on duty.
Okay. And what happened during that contact?
During that contact, I was able, he was able to identify who served the alcoholic to the underage operative and was advised of the violation.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Sergeant Noonan?
Was the, was identification asked for?
It was not.
Was the establishment crowded?
It was not.
And you could see, you were in the blindest sight of the transaction?
I was in the parking lot, we had another undercover officer in the area.
Who witnessed the...
If I, my reflection is, he didn't actually see the transaction, he walked in a short time after and saw the underage operative in possession of the beer.
Okay. But he, was he the only one in the bar at the time?
There were some, there were several other patrons, but I would not consider the bar area to be crowded, no.
This was a Thursday evening?
Correct, at 9:49 PM.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Sergeant Noonan? So we would proceed to...
Uh, yes, I don't know if the applicant has anything that they have, but in terms of the factual issues here.
No. We'll stipulate to the facts as presented and do not dispute any of the facts.
Okay.
Frank, can you describe what type of follow-up happened once this was discovered that there had been a violation or an alleged violation?
Yeah. If I could just go over a few things with you. First of all, Attorney Frank Spleen, representing Waxy O'Conners. With me to my left here is Mark Rollader, who is an owner, owner, as well as Paul McKinnon, who's also an owner, and Alfred Kornbeck, who we've applied to become manager on the liquor license, and we're in front of this board tomorrow night on that issue. Initially, again, we like to stipulate to the facts and to a liquor license violation serving a person of the age of 21. We like to apologize to the Board of Selectmen of the town for the violation and for being present in front of you a second time within a three-year period. There is no excuse for an employee for serving underage person, not for asking, not asking for an ID is unacceptable. And we know that this board takes all violations very seriously, and Waxy O'Conners also does. Both the owners and the management are quite disappointed that there was a violation, and are going to do everything in their power to correct anything that needs to be corrected. On that night in question, which was again Thursday, September 25th, it was a very slow night, as Sergeant Noonan indicated, there were minimal customers in the establishment. The bartender never asked the operative for his ID and served that underage individual. The bartender indicated to us that there was a group of regular drinking-age customers that were seated near the operative, and that he believed the operative was one of them and a drinking age. This is not an excuse for serving that individual. It is that either, but it's just an explanation that we received as to why he served that individual who was under the age 21, why he did not ask for an ID. The employee was terminated the next day because of the violation. This employee had been hired in August, August 4th to be precise, as a trainee. He is, is a smart, educated, and hard-working professional. He has a master's degree in business from BU, undergraduate degree from Bentley College, and has a long history in working in the liquor industry, both with restaurants as a bartender and a bar manager, and in sales and distribution with a distribution company. He regrets his action and understood the reason for his termination. So he was only with, with the company for a couple of months, he was a trainee for August, and was hired permanently in September. And again, the violation occurred at the end of September. As I indicated, Waxy O'Connor has hired Alfred here to be the new manager on the liquor license. Alfred has a long history... Alfred has a long history within the restaurant liquor license industry. He's currently reviewing all their procedures and policies, with emphasis on serving alcohol beverages in particular, and for the next six months, that is his number-one priority. All the employees at Waxies is tip-certified and has been. Employee that was hired was tip-certified and had been for a number of years, as his long history in the restaurant industry indicates. He made a bad error of judgment that night, but one bad judgment of employee does not make a trend, does not indicate non-compliance by Waxy O'Conners and their other employees. However, it does emphasize the need to continue reviewing, educating, and acknowledging with their employees all these rules and regulations, procedures that need to be followed. Again, two years ago, we were in front of this board for a violation, and all their intentions was never to be before this board again, but a violation has occurred, and we're here to work with the town in order to get through this. Again, the action of that one employee was not in line with the expectation of all the Waxy O'Conners employees. We'll accept the board's decision as to the second violation, which, within your guidelines as to whatever you decide tonight. Again, finally, the responsibility of the violation is shared by the management owners and the employee that occurred, but management is responsible for that violation now, and will do everything in their power to ensure that all their employees will not serve any underage individuals or intoxicated persons or cause any other violations. So, again, Waxy apologizes for this violation, for being here in front of you again, and to the town of Foxborough. And I know Mark would just like to say something for a moment.
Yes, good evening. Again, I'm up here again for the second, up from Florida for the second time, for the same violation. We take full responsibility for the violation. Like, we have over, in all the locations, we have over a hundred and fifty servers, bartenders, and I'm back up here in Foxborough again for this, for the one same violation. It's a physically, I hit the roof when I heard about it. Paul McKinnon called me, he says, you can't believe it, and more so, I could not believe who actually served the drink, because I personally interviewed the guy twice in Lexington Store. As Frank said, he was a college graduate with a business master's degree out of B.U. I forgot, out of college, but a very young, presentable guy, very, I don't know, Sergeant, have you seen, have you seen him? He was like a good-looking, I suppose every mother would like to have, have this son. He was great manners, he was good-looking, he's clean-cut, educated, loved the liquor business, he served in the wholesale side of things, which was another responsibility, and I just couldn't, I could not believe he was the person that served the drink. As I said to Paul, first thing I said to him, I hope you terminated him, and he said he did. I got an email from the, the guy in question, he personally emailed me, he was apologizing, he says, hey, I'll, I'll come to the hearing, I'm, you know, I feel so bad about this, I have great hopes to work with in your group, or whatever. I'm not going to listen to you through the skipjacks or whatever, and excuses or whatever, there's no excuse, you know what I mean? It made me re-see the policies of, of our group, you know, I talked to the management, I says, right, if we're not getting it right, you know what I mean, it's, it's a manager's decision, it comes from the top from me. I've tried, I've implemented another procedure through the POS, when, when they clock in, the first thing to remind them is the card, or whatever, they can't clock their hours in, I'm not going to make any excuse for it, you know what I mean? Here in front of the board, I apologize that it's happened, I apologize that I'm here again, sorry.
And if we could, I'd just like to ask Alfred just to come up and just talk about some of the procedures that they're going to implement.
Yes, I'm Alfred Carnbeck, I've been in the restaurant business for over thirty years. I have had liquor licenses in my name for more than fifteen years, and during those more than fifteen years, never once have I had any violation in the establishment of my liquor license. I am kind of a conservative by the book guy, and after reviewing the, the policies, I will implement as many policies as I can, and we will have everybody tip-certified, not just the bartenders, there will be servers as well as bartenders, that's contingent of employment to, to work there, you will have to be tip-certified. I do agree, having meetings every day with the staff, just to remind them to be diligent about carding people, we want to protect everybody, and we certainly don't feel that that should be a culture in this restaurant. I'm also pushing the food angle of it a little bit more, we are trying to raise the food mix and lower the liquor mix in the restaurant, because it is indeed a restaurant as well, it's not just a bar. So, we are working diligently with that, too. We did bring another kitchen manager in to help with the food and raise that mix. But I was not here when it happened, but moving forward, that's my plan, is to comply, educate the staff, regularly, regular meetings with them, and there won't be any violations with me in charge, that's for sure.
Thank you. Any questions, want to start, Jim?
Regarding, I guess a question to Mark, regarding the policy, when you were in front of us in two thousand thirteen, there was a settlement agreement, and there was some concessions made at the meeting of the changes that you would do following the, the last violation. Can you explain the policy changes that you've implemented since you were here in front of us last time, and how it relates to the settlement agreement? The settlement agreement that was signed?
Signed.
If you don't mind, could I, I just want to hear from Mark, since he's the owner, do you have an understanding of what you agreed to in two thousand thirteen and what you had to carry out for the year, as far as your policy changes?
Paul's, Mark is located down in Florida.
Okay.
So, he's not involved in the day-to-day operation.
Okay, who would I ask that question to then?
Well, the best person would have been the former manager, who's not with the company anymore.
Okay, but the, the settlement agreement was, wasn't signed by the manager, though, wasn't it signed by?
It was signed by Mark, I'm sure, or?
It says right here, Mark was signed, signed it.
Yep.
And I'm not trying to trip you up, but there was some specific requirements that had to be done by Waxies over this, this past year, between that settlement agreement and now. Some of it has to do with policy, and some of it was expressed at the meeting that doesn't show up in the?
In the settlement, if I remember correctly, there were supposed to be quarterly updates with the town, confirmation of tip certification, quarterly meetings with the staff with regard to tip certification and reviewing policy and procedures, and through that time, I would periodically go in there to confirm that they were doing those things, and they did.
Okay, and then there were reports supposedly being sent back to the town in a revisit to the selectmen over this past year? Did that ever happen?
If, if you look in the file, I forwarded some things to Mr. Pecos initially, we were going to come in, and because of your agenda, we were told we didn't have to come in, and then when I started meeting with Mr. Pecos about sending in the reports, he indicated to me that wasn't necessary, that if you and I had the discussions, that was fine. I asked him if he made sure that was okay with the selectmen, and he said it was, and then when he left, I did verbally talk with Mr. Cutler about it, told him the situation that was going on with Mr. Pecos, and he said that's fine with him, his place was, was quite full, so he didn't need anything else. So, that, those were the circumstances, but if you look in your file, the first meeting we're supposed to come in, I sent in a letter with all the information, and we were told that we didn't have to come in, and then thereafter, I was verbally told by Mr. Pecos, because, you know, I'll know, I'm in town all periodically, I always went in there to make sure that I went over it with Mr. Pecos, and he was always, that's fine.
So, this is, thank you, and so, the license, on one of the items, number ten on the written, written agreement, the licensee shall appear before the board on March fifth, two thousand thirteen, for a status conference regarding the license, so you're saying Mr. Pecos said our agenda couldn't?
I can't remember if that's the one that I sent in?
And then the license?
The letter four, I sent in a letter, initially, yes, actually, I have it somewhere in my file.
I remember seeing the letter, I remember the letter, yeah.
Okay.
There was a letter in the, in the file, providing some information, and eventually we were told we didn't have to come in.
Okay, and then the letters that would do us on June first, September first, December first?
I asked Mr. Pecos if he wanted me to put all that together, and give, told me, indicated me I didn't have to, I went in there, told him what was going on, that the meetings were being held. If I remember serves me correctly, the first meeting was held on time, the second was not, but it was held shortly after the time it was supposed to, and they had the subsequent ones.
And then they trained? I'm sorry, guys.
I cannot say that they, I know they had it in April of this year, I'm not sure if they had it in October, because of all the changeover.
You talking about the in-house training?
Yes.
On April and October?
Yep, all those occurred, I can't say that the one in October occurred or not.
So, do we have, is our file complete, everything that we have regarding this hearing and the last, is, do we have it? Is there things in the file that we don't have, correspondence?
I can't speak to that, I don't know if there's anything, everything that we have in our records.
For the last three years, yes. Do you think?
Okay.
We don't know if we have all these.
Right.
The only thing that wasn't in the file was the, that A.B.C.C. one, but that was from two thousand ten.
Yeah, yeah, the A.B.C.C. violation, but this, this one here was a requirement struck, nothing to do with the state, it was just for the selectmen. All right, thank you.
Question?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but was it a requirement that they had cod readers at the front door?
Yes, there's scanners, and we do have the scanner.
Okay, were those being used on the Thursday night, September twenty-fifth?
No, scanners are typically used only on weekend nights, on weekend nights when you expect large crowds, or other holidays and all that, where you, you expect large crowds.
But I do recall when you were here a year ago, there was a manager, two, two?
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah.
Yeah, there was a manager that said he was the longest manager, no, sorry, manager, a bartender that you've had, he said you purchased it, and you, your policy is to use it on Thursday, Friday, and Saturdays? Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Sunday, you don't use it, but your policy is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, to use a scanner at the door, so everyone that comes in gets scanned?
Generally, security is only on Friday and Saturday, and Thursday on if there was a special event, as Frank said. I do not recall seeing Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, you know, if you have it down there that I said it.
Oh, is, is, there's no, I, I went back and looked at it, it's specific, it didn't come from me.
I don't recall, but generally, it's, I might, I would have said, yeah, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, Thursday being like, if there's, if there's a draw-in at the bar on a Thursday night, or whatever, and Friday and Saturday definitely.
Yeah, okay.
Again, the scanner typically requires a person at the door, as this Thursday night indicated, it's very, very slow, so, so there's no, no need for somebody at the door. What should happen is the bartender should ask for I.D.
Oh, yeah, and I, I probably agree with that, but I, I didn't make up the policy. When this was presented to us a year ago, it was the same, the Thursday nights were still quiet, and this specifically said they will use a scanner on a Thursday night.
But they still have the scanner behind the bar seven days a week, the scanner is behind the bar.
That's great.
But not at the door, at the door, and at the bar, different things.
And what do you do with the scanner behind the?
Well, if the bartender's checking, if there's no doorman on the bartender, there's a scanner there behind the bar, it is there to be used.
And?
But it only works if?
It's not used.
The person?
I'm not trying to be facetious, but you could, you could have five of them, if they're not used.
And he was, he was the manager in charge at the time as well, the bar manager at the time.
May I make a point, please? It's, it's been used six and a half thousand times since we got it in in February of two thousand thirteen.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
Sorry, the I.D. scanner has been used six and a half thousand times since it was put into place in February of two thousand thirteen.
What's that?
What's that, David?
Paul, it was one short. One short.
Was the manager on, on the premises at the time?
Not the manager of Record, and not the manager of the facility, so now, there were just two individuals on.
Okay, when did Mr. Lathrop leave, the former manager?
He left very end of August, I believe, August?
August, yes.
Okay, and also, I was, had been reading information, past information, and what was interesting is the excuse that you, that the bartender gave, that this person, he thought was near regulars, and so he thought, that was the exact same excuse that was used the last time you were here.
You're absolutely right.
So, again, I say?
We're not using that as an excuse, that's what we were told. I can't tell you if there was anybody sitting near, near him, you know, in past years, you've asked, what were the circumstances? That is what we were told.
And, I mean, I hate to sound like a broken record, but all we're asking is, you follow the law, you ask for I.D., especially a young-looking person like that, and all we're asking, if you do that, and, and also, you got caught in the sting one night, what happens the other three hundred and sixty-five days of the year? That's our concern, and like I said, your name is on the license, our name is on the license, and so we are as concerned about what goes on in the establishments as you are, and that's why you're, you're here before us today.
Just a quick follow-up, so the manager left in August? And this happened in September, so who managed, there was no manager?
Well, it was the manager of Record, but there's a manager of the whole restaurant, and Paul is around a lot, he's the manager, during that time, were you? James O'Brien was a temporary manager.
Did, were we supposed to get that notice that he was a temporary manager?
Well, just running the facility, he, he wouldn't be really the manager on the license. We had, Paul interviewed a number of people, determined who they wanted to hire to become the manager. The sting occurred, the first go-through for applicants, they didn't find somebody they felt was the right fit, and went through a second interview process, eventually they thought the best thing was for Foxborough, was to bring Alfred up, to use his many years of experience, to really go through it, look at the rules, the regulations, to really get somebody with that experience to take over. We expect Alfred to be on, on the license for six, maybe twelve months total, and to hire somebody else full-time that we hope to have for a number of years on the license there, but they decided that in the best interest of Foxborough, Waxy O'Conners, that Alfred would be the best one, and to bring in somebody from the outside that they weren't knowledgeable about to take over Foxborough.
Yeah, we have the application for tomorrow's meeting, and I've already reviewed it, and I'm going to ask a question now that I was going to ask you tomorrow. The numia, I'm sorry, I forget what you, the name, Mr.?
Alfred Carnbeck.
Yeah, do you, where, where do you reside?
East Hampton, Connecticut.
So, and where, when you're going to be the manager of Record?
I'm going to be living in Pawtucket, Rhode Island, it's only fifteen minutes from here.
So, when will you be moving to Pawtucket?
The fifteenth of November.
Of December? Of December, this month?
Next week.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If I may add to the board, the irony of that, the time that the transition to the start of August. We probably had more managers in that month around Foxborough than we ever had. I think John Shack was there, Paul, Alfred, James O'Brien.
Yeah, and initially.
We were, we were going through a transition, and I was up myself personally for five days at the start of August. And, you know, we talked about changes, and, and we talked about management, and bar man, bar managers. We talked about everything, but just that one month, there was more managers around Foxborough than ever. And, and, and it's not an excuse or whatever. I know the letter went out, the letter went out in January. And John Shack was, I personally put him in there. It was, how long was he there from the start of it? Three months he was in there. I think the chief met him and a couple of other people, you know, experienced guy, whatever. He wasn't aware of, there was a sting run out or whatever. But it's, it's not an excuse or whatever. I just saying there was so much management around Foxborough at that time, or whatever, and still, this thing still happens, you know.
Why, why do you think you have a problem with keeping managers in, in Foxborough? If you have other locations, then you don't seem to have that problem.
Well, I don't think it's Foxborough per se. The initial person that was gonna be moved down from Lexington?
Woburn.
Woburn, from the Woburn facility. And I kept pressing upon Paul that we needed to file for change of manager. And she wasn't giving us the detailed information we needed. Eventually, either late in September or early in October, she left for another position at another restaurant business. So, what that told me was that she had been looking, and she didn't wanna give me the information to file for the license. And, you know, and have to come down possibly for a hearing. So, then they hired John, who ran his own restaurant out in Utah, I believe. And he had quite a background. But he was in Foxborough, we met with the police chief. He and I went over and talked to him about a number of different things. Gave him the, the history of Waxies. And he was gonna be going on the license, and eventually, he went on to a different.
Offer.
Offer also. And that's when they went out and started really interviewing people, and they went through two, two rounds. And in my opinion, to their credit, they decided to bring Alfred up to take over Foxborough and bring in somebody new. That would have to come in blind. I think Alfred's gonna be doing a great job.
Can I just ask?
So, it's a long story, no excuse, again, for the violation. But that was the reasoning for the manager license.
So, what is the ratio of alcohol to food sales currently? Do you know that?
Fifty-five percent alcohol and forty-five percent food.
Okay. So, just given that, has there been any discussion about just checking every person's ID who comes in? Since I think you typically would have a younger crowd there to begin with.
Thirty has been the, the standard on the policy is to, anybody that looks thirty, up to thirty or under, you know, the question mark is, well. What if somebody is thirty and is nineteen? I don't think it's gonna happen. Sometimes you gotta use a little bit of discretion, like, I was ID'd last week somewhere, and I was, I was laughing, whatever, you know what I mean? So, I felt good about it. But it's, that's normally our, our standard. It's like, you gotta look thirty. If you don't look thirty, you gotta ID them, you gotta card. And I think that's a general standard everywhere. You know, it's the, to, to ID everybody, it, it doesn't make, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense at all.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Everybody all set? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, I'll make a motion. I move that there's a finding of fact that there was service to an underage person as described in the report that was entered September first for the incident on, I'm sorry, October first, for the incident on nine twenty-five fourteen. And that the board agrees with the facts as presented.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
I agree.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
I, I move that we close the public hearing for, the hearing for Waxie O'Connor Irish Pub on Main Street in Foxborough.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so, we have a decision to make if we're going to, you know, discuss this evening penalties for these two sites? Or if we wanna defer that discussion to another, to our next meeting?
I'm here.
You're here, yeah.
I prefer to do it tonight rather than prolong it to another evening.
Okay.
Yeah.
David?
Well, it, it was a suggestion by Attorney DeLuca last week that maybe we want to delay it only because this isn't, these are, this, these two hearings are a little different from the previous hearings that we had. Circumstances is more to consider. And I think I would like to have some guidance by our, and I don't think you're prepared for that right now.
Um, that's correct. Certainly, something I can discuss with the board tonight, but it, I do know from talking to Attorney DeLuca that separating it between the liability and a sentencing essentially phase seemed to make sense in terms of splitting the two, the two hearings.
So, that would be, that, that would be my preference.
Would that be another hearing, or would that just be us deliberating?
Uh, it would be a deliberation. I misspoke when I say hearing, another meeting, yes. The public hearing has closed, for the board's vote.
Well, it seems like the consensus is to discuss it this evening. Okay, alright.
Yeah, we may, I mean, discuss it, and we may not have, we may not come to our final decision. We could put that off till another hearing. I mean, there's one, one piece I do wanna get from Waxies is, I'm unclear on the file if we're saying we've got nothing in the file of, of things that were sent over. I would like to get from Waxies an itemized list of how they've complied to this or not. So, I think that, at that point, at least, we'll have something in the file that we can discuss. Because part of that settlement agreement was if those weren't followed, then there's ramifications. So, I just want it to be complete, one way or the other.
Phil, are, are you aware of this file? I mean, is there a place you can go to in town hall and actually?
Well, we, we do maintain files on all the, all the licenses, separate files.
Okay, so any correspondence or any, any documents that came in?
Typically be maintained in those files, that's correct.
We viewed it this morning, and everything you have here was from the file. And then, the things that you don't have were like prior to the three-year period, look-back period.
Did you compare the contents with the, the agreement?
We did not.
You did not, okay.
And so, would I be interested?
There was, I was just gonna say, so there was no letter from, Frank, was the letter from you?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah. Because I remember seeing a letter from, at the time, that they were supposed to come before us. We had it with their first report. And then, you're right, I don't remember ever seeing a written report after that.
But, I mean, there's reports, but there's also specific dates of training that they were supposed to do. So, if they've done it, great. If they haven't, it is what it is. But I'd be interested in getting a letter on Waxie's letterhead that says, we either did these or didn't do it. And I had, I wanna notarize that it's a legal document. Because to move forward without that information, we might as well have not followed the previous stipulations at all.
Brandon, would we, in order to consider, you know, like reconsider a piece of information like that, would we have to reopen a hearing to do that?
Uh, to consider, yes, because that would be not a hearing, not reopening the hearing on the liability phase. Essentially, would be receiving evidence or information from the applicant on the sentencing phase, the disposition of the sanctioning phase, yes.
So, we, we could ask for this and use it as a, as a tool in our deliberations?
Exactly.
We don't have to post a public hearing or anything like that?
Um, the safest course would be to, you have to post notice of, of the meeting per the open meeting law.
Right.
But in terms of the public hearing itself, the hearing on the underlying violation itself is closed.
Okay. You have a copy of that?
Brandon, I have a question. Is it what they call a three-year look-back?
Yes.
That year, is that January to December? Or if there was a violation in March, would it be from March in one year to March the next year?
That's.
How does a three-year look-back work?
The three years is during any three-year period. Because otherwise, an applicant theoretically could have an violation just because it was in January. Earlier in the year, it might have escaped it. It's within a three-year, any three-year period.
Three years from the, from the latest violation?
Yes, looking back three years.
Thank you.
And actually, that's per the, the Foxborough rules and regulations for holders of alcohol licenses. It does say, within the past three years, parentheses counted from date of last violation.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's within the Foxborough rules.
Okay.
So, so one of these letter that Attorney Splinter just handed us is in our file. All employees will carefully check this identification. This is their policy that they came up with. So, that, that's one of the items, but there's.
We, we do have that one.
Yeah, that's, that's in the file.
I mean, also, if you're, I, I went back and checked the min, meeting minutes. And we have, on Waxies, we had, uh, they came before the board for, you know, continuance and everything. On March twenty-second, two thousand eleven, April twelfth, two thousand eleven, May seventeenth, two thousand eleven, May twenty-fourth, two thousand eleven. January twenty-second, two thousand thirteen, February fifth, two thousand thirteen. So, that's in the, if you wanna go back and look in the, in the minutes. You know, they would, things would continue for two, three.
That's your scanner, Frank. Is that one of those microphones or the?
Um.
I think so.
Are these originals, Frank, you need these?
Um, I can have the one, Jim, I have another one of those.
Point made.
Okay. So, we're looking at, why don't we start with a discussion, well, we'll continue with a discussion of Waxies, since that's the topic that we're on right now. So, we're looking at a second violation in a period of two years. September twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve was the last violation that was selling to a minor. And there was a sixteen-day suspension from January twenty-third to February seventh, two thousand thirteen, it was served. And, um, at the time, that was the third violation within a three-year period. Now, we're in a different place. Second violation, selling to a minor.
So, according to our rules, the.
The guidelines, yeah.
According to our guidelines, the, you say that the maximum penalty is ten days?
Three to ten days.
Three to ten days, but the maximum is ten?
Yes.
This, this came up last time, in, in the discussion we've had in the, in the, in the past about this is all, as well as, these are guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's not the minimum or the maximum. If you look at item number thirty-seven, which is before the sanctions. It says, notwithstanding these regulations, a local licensing authority may impose different and/or more stringent requirements, conditions, and/or penalties upon a particular license and/or license premises where necessary to assure public safety. So, when I asked this question at the last meeting, someone had said, no, that this is, these are the guidelines, and that's it. And I think, my opinion is, these are the guidelines, and you can do more or less, depending on
Right.
the individual. So, they're not rules in the guideline. Which is, I think, different than what you would say.
No, I just wanted to clarify, just so that everyone understands, you know, what our toolbox looks like.
I think it's interesting to note, too, that if the last penalty was a sixteen-day suspension, and your maximum amount for, is ten under this particular violation, it kinda, it doesn't really jive with what the last penalty was.
Well, I think that's because it was within a three-year period, though. I think that's why, it was within a three-year period.
Could you give a clarification of the look-back period?
Sure. Well, the look-back period itself, I mean, is stated in, in here, but that paragraph thirty-seven does prevent, present an opportunity for this board, if the board makes a determination that it was necessary, the buzzwords, I would say, would be necessary to assure public safety, if they make a finding that it's appropriate for that reason. And certainly, the board's within its power and authority to waiver from, or deviate from those suggested sanctions on, that's on the next page.
Can the board require that all patrons be carded when they come in the door?
Pursuant to this paragraph thirty-seven, that would be within a condition or a requirement, or as to be more stringent than what's, what otherwise is in here. So, the answer is yes.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other comments or questions about the guidelines?
Just one, not, not on the guidelines, one question for Waxies. You know, we'll, we'll put the elephant out of the room. Waxies has a very, I'll say, sordid history of violations and problems and everything else, and the town is aware of it. I just was wondering, how can, how can we have confidence going forward that, you know, no matter which sanctions that we choose to impose on Waxies? How, how can, how can you give us confidence that someday you're gonna get it right? You know, I mean, go ahead, Frank, yeah.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah.
I understand where you're coming from, John, with regard to the different settlements that we've had. But I think if you really look at the last two years, it's much different than the years before that. I, I met with the police chief today and, and just looked at a printout, the printouts for the activities during the different years in the last two years. I call it activity, incidences, whatever, are way down compared to the years before that. Before a certain owner and the manager was dismissed and replaced, and eventually bought out. So, I think the last couple of years, the issues are not nearly what they were before. Now, at any restaurant that serves alcohol, you do run into issues from time to time. So, they are gonna appear. I think the last two years, it's, it's nothing compared to what it was before. Can it still be improved? Yes. No one's gonna deny that. And I think that's why they brought Alfred up here, to really see where it can be improved, a new set of eyes that has that goal within the corporation to, to change it around. So, they do have that. All their other sites, as, as have been indicated, they don't have the violation, any violations. So, they do want to get it right. And, and, and they don't want to be back in front of this board ever again. Not that that might not occur because of human error. But that, that is their goal, and they want to minimize that, that possibility. of human error, but that, that is their goal, and they want to minimize that, that possibility of that error by making sure they hire the right people and they have the right oversight, which includes all the procedures and management.
Thank you.
Hope that answered your question.
Jenny? Just, just one more thing. I think this board has tried to be supportive of WAXI's. You came before us asking for a directional sign, working with the, the state. And, and as the road commissioners, we approved the sign to direct people to your, to your establishment because we are supportive of businesses in town. We try to be supportive. But not asking for an ID, I just cannot get over this. The simplest thing that we ask you to do wasn't done. And I will say, WAXI's is, unlike the other, the other people who came before us and said, well, now we cater to an older crowd, WAXI's does cater to a younger crowd. I mean, I've been in there, and I've been probably the oldest person in there. So if you cater to that kind of crowd, then you should be even more aware of age, especially like in a night that, that, when it's not busy on Thursday night. So that's why I'm really, you know, I'm really concerned because, like I said before, the sting was one night, but what happens the three hundred and sixty-five other days of the year? Was this a fluke? The sting was a fluke? Or is it just, you know, if we did multiple stings during the year, would you be for us, would you be for us again? Would any of the places in town be before us again? But that's the question that, like I said, our names are on the licenses, your names are on the licenses. I don't want to have to, I don't want to be in a position where someone says to me, why did you let this happen? And that's, that's our concern. And it should be your concern, too.
Thank you. So basically, Jim, you would want us to have in writing what the other actions were taken in terms of that agreement, and then we can-
Yeah, we went through a settlement agreement. I just want to see where we stand with what, what's been carried out and what hasn't.
Okay.
So, so it's a starting point. And the reason I say it is because there are, if the settlement agree, agreement wasn't adhered to, there's a whole set of other stipulations in here that we would consider on the past one, irregardless of this one right here. And I'm not to say and go back in time, but it clearly says, if that wasn't done, then the board has to revisit it independent if nothing ever happened again. So unfortunately, this is, this is the door that opened to bring it to our attention.
Okay. So then Frank, if you could provide a summary of all of the actions that were taken to comply with that agreement, and we could have that as an agenda item on our next meeting? Is that possible?
Wouldn't be the next meeting, it'll be the, the week, the week from tomorrow night.
Right. Okay.
Do you want us here or just provide that documentation?
If you could be here so we could ask questions.
I, I can be here, John, from WAXI's. I'll be available on that day.
Is that acceptable?
Is it the sixteenth?
It'd be-
The sixteenth, yeah.
I won't be available the sixteenth. I do call.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So we'll have that on our agenda for the sixteenth, and review that then. Okay? Thank you.
Is, is the sixteenth our regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes.
It's just gonna be part of that.
Yeah. Okay. So why don't we move then to a discussion on Skip Jacks? Now, in the Skip Jacks case, this is the second violation within one year.
Again, the other violation was serving to a minor during similar stint.
Right. And they received a letter of reprimand last year for that.
So this would be considered the second violation?
Yeah, within one, one year apart.
Actually, Jenny, your, your comment is what happens the other three hundred and sixty-four days a year. You know, a sting, if someone gets caught up in a sting, it's sort of an indication of the, of the culture of the business. And whether or not minors would, would be served throughout the year, we'll never know. But if you get caught up in a sting, one has to assume that your systems aren't working and that your training isn't working. So last year, Skip Jacks had a list of initiatives that they were going to implement, and obviously they are not working. I just was wondering if during, during the testimony, if anyone picked up that Skip Jacks had somehow laid out the groundwork for improvement? Because I didn't, I really couldn't discern that they're gonna do anything different except more training, more training, and more training. They did try to make the point that, you know, the, the bartender was lazy, that the bartender made a mistake, the bartender was, you know, not paying attention. And I, I continue to maintain that, you know, whenever we have these hearings and the management of these companies are in front of us, and that, at least the management has to own up, that they're the people that hire these folks and train them and support them and police them, but to, you know, say, hey, it's just the bartender, not us. That rings a little hollow with me. So, you know, in this case, Skip Jacks got a letter of reprimand last year, which probably was appropriate. It was the first violation they ever had. But here they are coming back almost three hundred and sixty-five days later. Similar circumstance. You know, they fired the bartender, but I don't really see that they're getting the message.
Okay. Jim, any comments?
Yes, similar. Similar thought process. I mean, it was a direct question, is where is the disconnect? And the answer was, we don't know. And, and, you know, we had this discussion at past hearings on other projects of whose responsibility? Is it ours to figure out a system that works? Do we need to work together? Is it, is it, is it more policing? Is it more training? Is it more what have you? But I don't want to be in the position to tell them where the disconnect is if they don't know where it is. I, I was quite offended when the argument of economics came up, and to be told that a day of closing or three days costs four hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. I was very surprised that came up because I know people, and I'm sure other people know people, that, you know, a mother would, would pay that price in a heartbeat to get their kid back. So if you're gonna talk about economics, the economics was brought up with Skip Jacks a year ago when we suggested to have a card reader. And the answer was, they were two thousand dollars or they were twenty-five hundred dollars. They're expensive, and they share one with another business. Whatever the arrangement they have with the business plan is not working. And, you know, I, I, I would, I would end it there. It's not our responsibility to find out where that disconnect is, if maybe they need two bartenders or three bartenders or somebody to look over somebody's shoulder, but it's not working. In the exact same story that we just heard tonight, it was a repeat of what happened a year ago. It was almost verbatim the same thing that happened. And I don't see any change coming a year from now because we're gonna be in the same boat. I, I was really hoping that they say they're implementing something else, or they're restructuring, or they're investing in something. But it was blame the bartender, even brought up she was, you know, boyfriend or something. It's, it was almost insulting to say, all right, give us the day and we'll move on to the next time, because that's what I was hearing on this one.
David?
Similar to what, what Jim just mentioned. We, we asked them what they do. We asked for detail on the, the pre-meal check. They give us a piece of paper and say, these are all the things that we're doing. But it almost seems like, once they leave that, that pre-meal check or the uniform check, whatever you want to call it, it's all bets are off. People are out on the floor doing, doing their own thing. They need to self-police that, out on the floor, at the point of sale. They can't do it in a back room. And for them just to say, this is, this is what we do, and we're just gonna use that piece of paper, and we're gonna train, 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 it's not working. Not when you come back second time in, in a year. You know, they, they talked about, you know, hurting the other staff members that, that weren't involved in it, but you know what? Sometimes it, it takes a little pain to get the message across. Everybody has to buy into it. It's the only way you're gonna self-police it. So, that's all I have to say.
Jenny?
Yeah, and each, everybody came up to us and they all had their own plans. This is what we do before, blah, blah, blah. You know, this is what we do. But the thing is, it's a law that you can't serve under twenty-one, under twenty-one, and you're supposed to ask for ID when someone looks like they're under twenty-one. And that's, that goes for everybody. You know, all the establishments. And it wasn't done. And that's all we're asking you to do is follow the law. That's all we're asking you to do, is ask for that ID. That's all we're asking. And it obviously wasn't done, so.
Thanks, Jenny. I know, you know, when I look at these examples of pre-meal discussions that happen, you know, again, you just wonder what could be done differently to somehow, you know, just reemphasize or somehow wake up the people who are hearing the same message over and over again, you know, for their five shifts a week or however many shifts a week. And, you know, it really, I keep going to, you know, a self-compliance check. I don't know how often managers who are present are actually, if they see someone who they think looks under thirty, do they just double-check ever? There just has to be some other way of self-patrolling that would heighten employee awareness and that, and there has to be consequences if that self-compliance check is failed internally. Ed, I wanted to ask Chief Oliver, if you could comment, do you have any thoughts based on what you've heard this evening of, you know, what, any suggestions for improvement?
Unfortunately, if I could come up with good suggestions, I, you know, would put it out on the market.
And be a millionaire.
Hopefully. Unfortunately, as much as I think the operators of our facilities are serious people and they are trying to do the best, it goes back to just repetition. I know that the Patriot Place team is in the process, if they have not done it already, about having their own compliance checks. And I know, going back to the late nineteen nineties, they actually, the other liquor license holders in the community actually formed a support group called Foxborough Cares. And they themselves, besides having meetings amongst themselves to talk about issues, I brought in speakers, in fact, Judge Winslow, he was sitting at the Rentham bench, came over to one of our morning meetings over at the ancient marina. And all the people that had licenses in the community were there to listen to what he had to say. And that type of community and dependence on one another so that they're all on the same page and doing their own compliance check. The guy that didn't pass their compliance check, no, he didn't lose his license from the licensing authority, but boy, he got a real hard time from his peers that got the green cards that showed that they asked for the proper identification. And I think, you know, as much as you have, you know, difficult decisions, in terms of assessing an appropriate punishment to bring about change, we've also hopefully get more people involved within our forty-two licensees themselves so that they can help check one another and make themselves successful. I always, I'm going far afield, apologize for the time, but whenever I'm issuing a pistol permit to a new novice shooter, I always suggest to them, just don't go to the range by yourself. Go with somebody that's an experienced person so they can mentor you so that you'll improve at a much faster pace. And it's almost the same thing amongst the management team. They have to be able to help one another so that we're not having this repetition of having, coming before the board with multiple offenders on something, as you said, Jenny, very simple. Ask for ID. Any doubt at all, just ask for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Yeah, and, and I do remember in the, in the nineties, the Foxborough Cares, I, I remember that very well. And we had far fewer establishments at that time. We have a lot of establishments in the town of Foxborough. And my concern is I do not want the town of Foxborough to become a mecca for underage drinking. Kids come in, I'm sure they have an app for that, you know, this is where you go. Even John Mitchum will refer to it. This is, in his day, there was always someplace you knew you could go to get served. I don't want Foxborough, the establishments in Foxborough to have that reputation. It's not worth it. So that's why I'm, I'm just concerned that, that the establishments aren't following the law by asking for ID.
Thanks, Jenny. Any other comments on Skip Jack situation?
Yeah, John Mitchum, I think was, I, I'm not sure if he knew that this was a second violation because he was alluding to the maximum penalty being three-day suspension, but just so everyone knows, this is a second violation. They were here exactly a year ago.
No, I think he knew that, because he said the same sailor story.
Did he?
Hmm. I think he joked about it, that it was, he had said it before, so.
So again, our guidelines for second violation talk about a suspension of three to ten days to consider. Also, an option of looking at liquor closing hours.
Can you say that we could put a stipulation on that they, well, could we do two things? Could we ask that they install readers, which I don't think they've done to date, and that they hired everyone?
Uh, yes. If the board makes a finding that, that those particular requirements are necessary to assure public safety, and they make that finding based on the evidence that's before the board, certainly the board is in a position to do so pursuant to paragraph thirty-seven of the rules and regulations.
But in your, in your opinion, are those actions reasonable, or would they be considered to be capricious?
Uh, those, those would seem to be reasonable based on these circumstances because they are part and parcel of the violation that's involved here. It's not, it's in, it's not an issue, for example, of, and just, just as an example, over service. The question is, the issue is, proper service to an individual of age. To require a reader is to ensure an individual, the patron or the customer, is of age. So it's, it's part and parcel. It's related to the underlying nature of the violations that are involved in these circumstances with this particular licensee.
Okay. So that's what you're leaning towards, John?
Mm-hmm.
In terms of length of penalty, um, do you want to start, Jim? Any thoughts?
You always look to the right to start it. Yeah, I'll throw this out. You know, was, was it, was it so egregious that it went outside of the written second violation sanctions? I, I don't think so. I think it was egregious that you can't ask for a license and, and what could have happened, could have been. But I think it's, I think if we look at the second violation suspension of license on three to ten days, I'm not interested of closing them early, eleven o'clock. I don't know what that'll do to their business. From eleven to twelve or eleven to one doesn't seem to be the issue. The fact is that they're just not asking for the ID when someone comes in. So I would make a motion to the board to suspend the license for ten days in accordance to, with item number two on the second violation.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
As well as the stipulation that they purchase and install readers at the front door, and that they ask for an ID of everyone that walks into the, into the establishment.
Okay. David?
I think where they were only issued a letter of reprimand on the first violation, and obviously this is a second violation, within a year. and obviously this is a second violation, within a year, I, I would recommend a, a five day suspension, and a fine, put towards self policing, or, or through a, through a fund, to help the police department do more frequent checks, and require ID, ID machine.
Brandon, a question about that type of approach. Can we require a license holder to, at their own expense, do that type of self-compliance check?
Certainly require a self-compliance check. I think the one caution I would have in terms of requiring the licensee to pay a fine, Massachusetts municipal law fund, I don't know if the town has an existing fund in existence where money goes in and can be spent for a specific purpose. Because usually money goes into the general fund and has to come back out through the town meeting, which kind of controls the purse strings with some exceptions. That would be the only potential caution I guess I would have on, on that issue.
Well, I think, I think compliance is, is an issue.
Yes.
Here. And it shouldn't be at the taxpayer's expense.
Right.
So it should be on, at the violator's expense. And I'm sure there's a, we can come up with a mechanism to accept a, a gift or donation towards the, the public safety.
Yes.
Bill?
I, I can address that, I can try to address that, that we, we would, in this, in the instance, I believe that what Brandon's referring to is that if in fact a fine was paid to the town, there is no mechanism to actually appropriate that money for the, for the intended use. The only way that could be done is if, if, through a town meeting action in the next budget cycle, which could be the annual town meeting. That you could actually then appropriate those same funds, or create a fund.
Right.
Where that money could be appropriated from, for the use of that purpose.
I know we have had that situation in the past. Couple of years ago, we did something similar to that. It just raises some concerns to me in terms of, you know, we have guidelines. We don't discuss monetary penalties as part of that.
The other piece I would add also is Massachusetts general laws do limit with, when a town fines a, a particular person, the limit by state law is three hundred dollars per offense. So there would be a cap pursuant to that. I believe that's chapter forty, section twenty one.
The board, we had discussed this in years past. It was a, it ended up being a donation to the general fund. And in that particular one, it was to be used for our police department for further training, which the irony was, they were doing their job and it went to further training. And, and they voted against it there, and I, I would vote against that here, because I don't think it's our purview to have them spend money on their own training in how to run their business, or even, you know, require them to put up money to do card scanners. I mean, we've, we've been through this before. It only works if it's turned on. It's not up to us to tell them how to run their business. It's up to us to put penalties, so they change their way to doing things. And, and I think the more days speaks a little more volume than having a card reader that may, may not even get plugged in. I, I, I see where you're coming from, David, but I, I, I've been through this a couple of years ago. And it just, it's a repeat now. Not, not skipjacks, but a different organization.
Jenny?
Yeah, I would be, I would be looking at ten day suspending. I would not be interested in, in asking for a fine, or any, you know, monetary. That just doesn't sit well with me. Whether we require the scanner, I think, did they say that they had the scanner, or that they don't use it?
They did not want to buy one.
Okay.
Yeah, that was last year, they, they said there was a.
Too expensive.
Too expensive.
Okay, well, I think maybe I would go along with requiring a scanner. But if we did that, does that mean, what about the other license holders in the town of Foxborough? I mean, are we, are we requiring the scanner just because this is a little egregious? One year, you know, two years in a row they've done it? So would that justify?
Jenny, the reason I brought it up is the, the systems, as they laid them out, really aren't going to change, apart from more training.
Yeah.
And this is a mechanism that at least put another layer of protection in place.
Okay.
Because the way they described their next actions, there was nothing substantive that I saw that could, could actually change their culture.
Okay. All right, so I'd go with the ten days, and then the requirement with the scanner, with the hope that the new manager would be, you know, in your wisdom, when you start looking at things again, would agree that the scanner is appropriate for us to require. So ten days in the scanner.
We're talking skipjacks, you're right.
Skipjacks, I'm sorry. The wrong thing, sorry. Yeah. Sorry, skipjacks.
So, you know, looking at the business and I was inclined to a five day suspension of the license, the requirement of the scanner, and checking, checking IDs. I agree that, you know, it didn't seem like there were changes in what was done from the prior year. I think that, again, this, the self-compliance piece, I think, once that, it goes into effect with the Patriot Place Group, assuming that does go into effect, I think that will be helpful to all of the businesses that participate. I find that, I, I believe that ten days, I would find, I would, I, I guess I associate that with something more egregious. This is serious. I think, you know, a penalty for a business, especially a high end restaurant, five days will be a significant impact to them. I think also as part of the discussion, we need to talk about what days are we going to require? Any particular day of the week for this penalty? I would just ask the board, you know, if you would reconsider ten, five? If we can meet somewhere in the middle at seven, if that would be considered?
Well, that was the number I had in mind.
Seven.
Yeah, I, although, I could be persuaded to go ten. I really could. Again, we, you know, shutting down a business, especially one that's a, you know, a restaurant, they have clientele, it's a busy time of year. But again, they are a highly regulated business. They know, they get into this, they know what they're getting into. They know if they fail compliance checks, they know what the penalties are going to be. I mean, they all signed up for this. So, but I think in the, given that they only got a, a letter of reprimand last year, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go seven. And, and, but honestly, if the board was drifting towards ten, I would join them.
What do you think about seven, David?
I'd be okay with seven.
Jenny?
Yeah, I'd go ten.
Ten.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm.
Still ten.
Still on ten.
All right, well, I think we're at seven. If you agree with that, John?
Yeah, like I said, Jenny, I thought that you had said five or four.
No.
No, you did, what was it, you Dave? Okay.
So we're talking about seven days suspension. With that many days, I'd like to suggest it be over a period of three months, as opposed to two that we had set for the last. Does that make sense?
Why?
I mean, there's no basis to say if that's good or bad.
Yeah. Yeah, I know in the past, we, we said, with the three day suspensions, we said at least one weekend, Friday or Saturday, the others, and they could choose the weekend, and they could choose the weekdays.
I think, you know, part of it is just giving, again, consideration to the business, whatever functions they may have going on. This is a, you know, busy time of year. But also, I think, you know, another way of looking at it, it, it does reinforce the punishment over a longer period of time. Any appetite for that?
Yeah, you know, it's, yeah, it's a busy time of year. It's a busy time of year for everybody. But if they just asked for that license, they wouldn't be here.
No.
Having, I mean, if this didn't happen a year ago, and have the exact same thing happen, and have us told that it was an investment issue, or they didn't want to do the scanner, and a year later, and we're worrying about the financial implications, because an attorney had said between tips, and it's not fair to the, the business. I'm sorry, but I go back to the fact that if a kid goes in there and drinks and spills out onto the street, it's, it would be looking at this at a completely different light. And, and, you know, I, I, I can take it a little easier when someone's over served, or something else happened that they don't have control over. But when a business has one hundred percent control over, and it's an employee, and just doesn't do the very basic thing, aside from all the training in the world, that doesn't ask for the ID for someone that looks so young, I, I don't, I put this at the top of the list of, of, of issues.
Any other suggestions? Seven days scanner required.
Checking all, checking all IDs? Was that something that?
Yeah, I was, I, I had added that to Jim's initial proposal.
So that's a scanner for anyone sitting down and having dinner, or going to the bar, or?
Mm-hmm.
At all times, right, not just weekends?
Yeah, it's going to be at the front door. And if I walk in, they'll ask for my ID.
To a restaurant where you're not even having drinks?
Yeah, I guess so.
If I walk in there with my family of five, and someone's fifteen, it, it just, I, I'm a little cautious of trying to tell somebody how to run their business. I'm a little more comfortable saying, if you don't do it according to the rules and regulations, this is what's going to happen. And, and, and hopefully they'll see that, and they'll buy five scanners, and, and three bodyguards, who knows? But I don't have enough ability to know if a scanner will even work. I've heard testimony from other places saying they don't use a scanner, because nobody looks at the ID. They just push it through, and it could be somebody that's.
And we've had people who say, we have scanners, but.
Yeah, so, you know, you get a false sense of security, you're going to, you know, they have a scanner and everything's fine. I, I think the violation speaks a lot louder and a lot more effective than a scanner.
Are we better off just saying, you need to card everybody?
Who orders a drink, yeah.
Right.
Again, and, and so, so, so we own it at that point. If we're giving them a business requirement to do, and something goes wrong, and they said, well, look, we, you know?
Obviously, they're, they're not, they're not doing it on, on their own.
Yeah, I, I, there's, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer here.
Let's figure out the, the time. We've got, um.
Sixty days. Seven days, sixty days.
Seven days and sixty days?
Mm-hmm.
And what do you have, need to be weekends?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Should be at least two weekends.
I agree.
Two days.
Two, two weekend days?
Yep.
Now, sixty days from today would be February ninth? Is that right?
Right. Approximately, yes.
Yeah, okay.
What would be sixty days from the decision, not, not from today, so?
Sixty days from tonight.
Draft it and sign the, uh.
Well, we, we're sixty days from tonight, or was that the time we hit on that?
I thought it was from the date of decision. I think it's February, because there's thirty one days in December and January, so that kicks it back to seventh, yeah.
I think the, it was the appeal, if they were doing an appeal, it would have to be five days after the letter was issued.
Right.
Okay, so seven days to be served within sixty days, including two weekend days.
Now, are we going to let the establishment choose the days, or shall we choose the days?
I'd suggest that we let the business choose the days.
Any thoughts on that, Jim?
I, I think we've done that. It's a restaurant, they don't have functions maybe, but at least, I think they, they could do a better job figuring out which days than us.
All right. Want me to make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, in, in response to the hearing on skipjacks, I moved that the board selectmen suspend the license for skipjacks for seven days. Those seven, that seven day suspension has to be served within sixty days of the final notification. And of those seven days, at least two of those days have to be weekend days, meaning either a Friday or a Saturday.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Only because I prefer ten days.
If you could have the record show that it's not because it's too severe, I, I think it's too lenient.
Thank you. Okay, so, we'll work on waxes on the sixteenth, and.
They have it down for sixteen.
That'll be the final decision of all the violations.
Madam Chair, just to, to make the board aware as well, I, since the last hearing of the board, where I received two inquiries from two establishments who had questioned, who had concerns about the dates of serving their penalties, which they had already advised the board. Actually, one of them was one of which the board had imposed dates. And they had asked for a reconsideration of, of one of the two dates, or possibly two dates to be moved to different times. I asked them to reduce those requests in writing. We did receive one request today, I'm still waiting for the other one. But it's possible that those, both those requests will be before you, at the next meeting on the sixteenth as well.
Okay. Thank you.
This was the same establishment, or two establishments?
There were two, two different establishments.
We imposed on only one though.
Correct, one of those was one in which we imposed the dates.
Okay.
Or the other one was, they had given us a date, but they want to retract that date.
They wanted to move to a different date because of, with a, with an event that had been scheduled for the date.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so I think we're all set for this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.